Good evening, welcome to the November 24th, 2025 regular session of the Board of Education. This is Joe Silio, President of the Board of Education, speaking. Thank you for attending in person or through Zoom. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you notice that today's meeting has been provided to the public and each member of the Board of Education as required by law? Tina, will you please take attendance? Present.
Present.
Yes.
Present.
Present.
Present. Present. Present. Present. Present.
Thank you, Tina. At this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for Mr. Willis de la Cruz. Mr. De la Cruz started here as a substitute cleaner in 2022 and became a cleaner here at the Garden City Schools in 2023. Mr. De la Cruz will be remembered for his dedication to his job and Garden City Schools. Our condolences go out to his family, especially his wife and children. Thank you. At this time, may I have a motion to accept the agenda for November 24th, 2025 regular session as presented?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Mrs. DiCaprio, will you please provide the treasurer's report?
Certainly, thank you. This is the treasurer's report for September 2025. We had a cash balance at the beginning of the month of $55,992,700. We had receipts in September of $3,385,400. We had disbursements of $13,544,055, leaving us with a closing balance of $45,833,649. Thank you.
So now we do the superintendent's report?
Sure. What I'll do first is have Kayla give her student report.
All right, so a lot has happened in the last month at all the schools in the district. So I'm going to start off with marching band. They...
Let's see. Oh, wait, I'm going here. There we go. Wait, 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 hold on. Yeah, I went the other way. Okay.
All right, I'll start with athletics. Yeah. So to start off, girls' field hockey were the Long Island champions. Boys soccer were the New York State champions for the second year in a row. Girls varsity volleyball won Long Island championship for the first time in Garden City history and reached the New York State Finals for the first time. Varsity football is Nassau County Conference champions, and they will have the Long Island championship game at noon in Stony Brook on Saturday. And we had two swimming state qualifiers, Madeline Gebhardt for the 500-meter freestyle and Katherine Kohler with the 100-meter butterfly, 500-meter freestyle, and the 200-meter freestyle. And then to go on to marching band, they placed second at the U.S. Bands Division 2A National Championships. They also earned best color guard, best percussion, and best visuals. And they competed at Nationals in Allentown, Pennsylvania, and placed sixth overall in best, earned best music. And this is all under Mr. Dela Monica's leadership. Then we had the high school fall production of Pride and Prejudice. The show was beautifully performed and really, really incredible to watch them up there. And then we had Kurt Tommen at the high school, which is just kind of a Latin-based competition that a few students go to Yale and there's another school that they go to.
Yeah, we're trying to get the clicker, maybe because of the, where, where, oh, there we go.
There we go. At Yale, the advanced team placed eighth in prelims and tied for second, and the intermediate team placed fifth. And at Harrington, the advanced team actually ended up winning in the finals. That was done by Olivia Alsbrook, Shnaitcho, Gabriella Tromba, and Nikki Geiger. So then we have No So November, which is just trying to be initiative, basically to limit our time on social media here in the high school. I think it's gone really well. We all met up during the gym classes with Mr. Cohen, and we kind of put goals down. So if you walk in the high school and you walk past the cafeteria, we all have the papers up of different grades and what our different goals are to limit our time on social media. And then we have the cast.
Wait, can I ask you one quick thing about the No So November? Were you guys, as students, surprised to see, because I know Mr. Steingrubner was saying that you guys all had to take out, you're not allowed to use your cellphone, but take out your phone to see how, how much time you spend on, I guess, on social media?
Yeah.
Or screen time, rather?
Say definitely. A lot of people were like, wow, I didn't realize. I had a lot of screen time. I read on my phone, so that was what that was from. But a lot of people don't realize what happens in the background. So if you, like, leave Spotify open, I can say you were on Spotify for six hours. But other than that, like, a lot of people were like, wow, I didn't realize I was on TikTok for four hours. I didn't realize I was on Instagram for three hours. So a lot of the goals that you see up there are like, I would like to limit my time on social media by half. I would like to put a time limit on TikTok for 30 minutes a day. But TikTok actually is a really great feature that you can do that and set a time limit for yourself with a password. But I've actually heard a lot of people talking about it because they, it was kind of a shock in the gym when we went across that.
And this was, I think, the, the digital citizenship from that committee or the PTA help, help with this event?
You can do it on all your kids' phones. I do it on any device my kid have, so it turns off.
Yes, you can. And then we had the cast club. So that's students in the high school are part of a club, a science club, and they go to Stewart, and they also normally go to Stratford. And you just do interactive activities with the kids. You teach some science fair projects. Last year, I went on the trip. We made lava lamps with them, and that was really awesome. So they did that. And then we had Veterans Day celebrations all across the schools. So we had veterans come to the schools. We also had flags put up at the high school, and it was just a really great activity to really honor our veterans. The last thing I would like to highlight is that we have a lot of performances happening at the both internet, national level, we'll say, from high school members. So Ava Nat was on The Voice, and she bought through, and I believe playoffs will begin December 1st. That's the fourth round of The Voice. She's on Team Nile, if anybody watches. I'm a big fan. And I think it's the live shows.
It is.
So everyone should join in next week to watch her live. That should be incredible. And then just for our primary schools, we had Thanksgiving celebrations happening this week. So everyone's very excited for Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you, Kayla. And for my report, this is, it's really nice because Kayla sends out really communication to all our principals and really gets the highlights from the different buildings. So lots of wonderful things happening in our district. And I don't know if, how many of you saw the, our production of Pride and Prejudice? It was unbelievable. And students spoke in the British accent throughout the whole, it was unbelievable. It was...
You have a Long Island accent, you know, like, they sustained very well.
I mean, honestly, it was college level. You forgot that you were at a, watching high school students, and the set was just unbelievable. So really want to thank our teachers, Ms. McLaughlin, our new English teacher, Ms. LaSella. Am I saying her name correctly? Ariat Lachala, and the Ms. Glor. Unbelievable. They were really great. The other thing I wanted to mention off of what Kayla said, I had the opportunity to visit Stratford today, and, you know, our students from the cast, the high school group, they were working with our, at Stratford. Stewart was last week, Stratford was this week. And I have to tell you, it was unbelievable to see our high school students. I mean, they were unbelievable with our children and what they, it was on electricity. And so they were really helping them make these cards, Thanksgiving cards. But what was more beautiful was, it was in Ms. Lang's class. She was one of the teachers, I don't know if you know, from Stratford. So she was so excited to see her high school students who are now, and she remembers, I mean, that is, she remembers all of her students, and then she showed her pictures, class pictures from each year with all the students' names. And that excitement, I think that what I want to highlight is the connections that our teachers do make with our students. It lasts forever. It was, it was beautiful. The other thing from Stratford that I also wanted to share with you is this, these coffee sleeves that, if we could pass this to, there you go, some coffee sleeves. There, this is the second year, Ms. Penso, who's a fourth grade teacher, she works with, you know, the, the French Connection, right? Yeah, workshop, that's what I meant, French workshop, sorry about that. It is unbelievable. These, these were created by our students, these coffee sleeves. And, and you guys can keep one if you'd like. There are student artwork on there. So this week, if you go to the French workshop, you will see, you'll get, if you order coffee or tea, you'll get one of these sleeves that are made from our students. Okay. One other item that I wanted to mention is, Kayla also talked about athletics. It's been an unbelievable season. So I was at the football game on Saturday, and one of our alums was there. And I think, Mr. Silio, you may remember, was a couple, Sawyer. Sawyer, do you remember him? When we had the student group come in, our high school student? So he was there, and he, and his brother, who's a senior here, was a football player. So I was asking him, how are you doing? And he goes to John Hopkins, and he was really talking about how well-prepared he was for college. He spoke specifically about physics, that he learned so much here in our high school that when he went to college, he still relied on the materials that we, and it's really Dr. Slater, he was there also. And then, of course, I asked about the other areas, writing is one of them, and he, he was like, no, very well-prepared for college. So that's always nice to hear from our alums. All right, some of the teacher accolades. So we have Elizabeth Duke Man. She's a teacher at Locust, and she was awarded the Long Island School Hero Award. And again, this is another, and this is a Coalition Against Bullying. She was featured in Newsday. We also had her in one of our press releases, and just really, this is a wonderful recognition for Ms. Duke Man. Okay. And we also have Coach Fennell. Congratulations to him. He was inducted into the National Interscholastic Lacrosse Coaches' Hall of Fame, which is pretty incredible. And that was on October 18th. So he has guided the Trojan to 304 victories, 14 Nassau County championships, 10 Long Island championships, and six New York State championships. So congratulations to Coach Fennell. We also had our Commitment Day. We had 34 students in our, for the college commitment ceremony. So we had a quick video that Mr. Ramirez created for you to see. Go ahead, Tina. I think this is the most we've had, 34 students.
Twenty girls, 14 boys.
Yeah. Anyway, congratulations to our, to our students. We also had the Elementary Literacy and Math Family Night event last week. It was very well-attended. Ms. Kaufman and Ms. Cardella, along with our teachers, really coordinated this event for our parents and children to learn together. And followed, that same evening, we had the book fair after a long, long time. I think it's been several years that we hadn't hosted a book fair, and it was, again, a wonderful event. What was best for myself, and I know Dr. Bowman was there as well, is to see that the children at the book fair, purchasing books, and our parents really talking about how it brought them back to their days when they were in school with the book fair. So it was, again, another wonderful event. We also have workshops through our pupil personnel services that Ms. Vivona has really worked toward coordinating. I think, how many do you have? There are six workshops. One, one was just last week, again, well-attended, and there, those, the topics are wonderful topics for all parents to really, these are virtual sessions. We'll put them up on the website so parents can attend any of these workshops. Okay, let's see. And then just some, some events that are just really special in our district, the Toys for Tots kickoff, that was at our students, Stewart students were involved with this, and they go to, to the mall each year to start the Toys for Tots. What's nice about it is Ms. Brenda McCarthy and Donna Welch from Homestead, they really coordinate this effort, and it's a, it's wonderful. I don't think the kids ever forget this, this event at the, at the mall. And then some other things that we have, we also had the CSEA. They did a holiday food drive, another wonderful event. This was throughout the district, I think. Last few years, it's been just the Transportation Department, but this year it was the entire CSEA group. And at the Transportation Department, they're also doing a coat drive. So again, these are just good, wonderful things within our community. And then here's some construction update. You can see the, for the addition, the foundation, how that's being built, lots and lots of work happening. And I think we're still on schedule. Am I right, Mr. DiCaprio, with our construction project? You attend every single one of those meetings?
Um, maybe.
We're getting there.
I think they're, they're moving along. They're, they're trying to make up some time of things that have come up with the foundation. But what you're looking at there is the walls, the cement pillar blocks that will make up the new hallway that'll go, that'll be connecting the two schools. So this was very important work to do before the winter came in, and that is going beautifully.
And this is the irrigation. This is also, and has this been completed or still in progress?
The irrigation is mostly finished. They are still needing to do the facade, the seating, and just the final connections of the electrical on this. But the, you know, the, the heads and the, the piping and all that stuff.
Good, thank you. And then, you know, we, we have the, last time when we met, we had shared that the district-wide safety plan, that's been on, on the website, just to get a 30-day common period. Again, this is around the new requirement for cardiac emergency response plan and, and training for our staff and students. So that's on our homepage on the website, and, and we will be adopting it at our December regular meeting. Okay. And we have the early dismissal, and that is tomorrow, Tuesday, and then we're, schools are closed on Wednesday, and then again for Thanksgiving. So we have that. And then, just a couple of other quick things that I wanted to mention, and then I'll talk about Mr. Mueller in a minute, is Mr. Curran for Hemlock, he has already started with the transition. So he's been in, in, in the district. He was here last week. He was here again this week. And just in terms of what, come December 1st, he'll, he'll be at Hemlock, for Hemlock, Hemlock, yes. And we will make sure with our, you know, that they're, send a note home to our parents to come stop by to, to see him and to meet with him. And there was, yeah, I also want to mention Tuesday, November 18th, we celebrated the School-Related Professionals Day. And we really want to thank, you know, we, we, we don't talk enough about all the other folks within our school system that really make, make our district what it is, which is our paraprofessional, our teaching assistants, our nurses, lunch monitors, cafeteria staff, hall monitors, security personnel, IT staff, our transportation staff, buildings and grounds, and our clerical staff. Their contributions really make our district and our schools function and run the way it ought to be. So we thank them. And just a couple of other items on the agenda, and I think you'll speak to the, the Section 8 letter, just, and then just a couple of other things. We have Mr. McCran, who teaches music here at the high school. He'll be retiring. He's, he's been here for 31 years. And if you have ever gone to his concert, he really takes you on a musical journey. It is incredible watching our students and him on the stage. So that's, you know, we wish him well, and his last date here is February 23rd. We wish him well, but we will celebrate and honor him at the end of the year when we honor all of our retirees. We also have policies on the agenda. There are some for the second reading, which we've already discussed, some that are for first reading, and there are really no major changes. They're really updating the language. And there are also some policies we're eliminating or abolishing because they're no longer, they're subsumed under other policies, or they're no longer needed. So you have that on the, we have the budget calendar, that's also on the agenda. We have some transportation contracts. We also have donations. We'd like to thank Mr. Tyler Kolek of the New York Knicks for his generous donation of 25 pairs of Puma sneakers for the varsity basketball team. So we really thank him for his generosity. We have the scope programs. There are several scope programs on the agenda. We're happy to continue this partnership with scope and Mr. Dan Side. He really takes, leads that work in our district, working with Ms. McLaughlin. And so I wanted to end on Mr. Ed Mueller. So he is, you know, we, Kayla talked about Veterans Day, so that's a huge celebration. And we do a variety of learning experiences for our kids, but we bring our veterans in our schools. Mr. Ed Mueller was a teacher, he's a, he's a veteran, but he's also, was also a teacher here in our district. So he comes every single year for the celebration. When I joined Garden City, he actually had written to me, believe it or not, and with an article that I, I have in my office. I was trying to look for it so I could share it with you, but it was, so he's going to be turning 100 next year. Incredible, isn't it? And he comes every year, and it is probably that one of the best part of, of the celebration for all of us at Stewart School. He taught at Stewart School, and let me see, from what year? From 1955 to 1989. Pretty incredible. And he is, if you were, if you come to any of those events, it is pure joy. And the students, I don't think they ever forget the celebration we do for our Veterans Day. And then finally, December 9th is our work session. Our focus is going to be on primary and elementary updates, that there, our principals are really planning a wonderful session for, for our board and our, for our community. We're going to have our students here as well for that day. And then finally, behalf of our, all of us here, we want to wish everyone a wonderful, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Just to follow up on what Dr. Sin and I were saying, the board will be sending a letter to the New York State PHSAA Appeals Committee regarding the suspension of our coach and student, who I think most are familiar with, but we think that both involved showed transparency and integrity when, when the issue was raised. And I think the one thing that the board felt strongly about was, is that the young student was particularly penalized, what we think excessively. And we, we'll be sending a letter signed by the board to the, and New York State PHSSA Committee, Appeals Committee, just to, to voice support for our, our student and coach. And hopefully, you know, this issue doesn't pop up in the future, but if it does, that they get treated, or anybody gets treated fairly, because we, I think we felt that that was not handled appropriately. So that's, that's all I had from my perspective. Do you have anything else from the board?
So I just wanted to update on something that we've been working together as a board. One of our goals is really to increase transparency with the community organizations, like outside of the Board of Education. So we've been making efforts to attend meetings at the POA meetings. This week, last week, Erin and I attended a joint meeting with the Eastern Property Owners Association and the Central Properties Owner, Property Owners Association. And then on Wednesday evening, we also attended a meeting for the Estates Property Owners Association. And when we are coming to those meetings, we are providing those community organizations with updates and information about the work of the district. Most recently, we brought information about the Student Achievement Report. So looking forward to having more of those, more of those meetings so that we can hear from all of our community. We can answer questions and address, you know, concerns and get some of their feedback and thoughts on, on the school district as well. If there was anything else you wanted to add to that?
Yes. Well, just in, to kind of go along with that, it was a really nice way to sit down and just talk to people about the school district. I know everyone here, you get props for being here. Thank you. But we also know that it's very difficult sometimes to get to a Board of Education meeting. So meeting with people where they are is very important to hear what people have to say, the questions people have. And just in a very general, general way, I had, I spoke with a couple of people, but for future, as I'm still learning, questions were asked about the eighth graders. They're part of that bubble, and what it looks like in terms of preparing for them come to the high school next year. So just in a general sense, for answers like that, maybe someone can direct me so I can help answer that question or, or obviously I would tell them to, or then meeting. But there are questions like that out there, and, and people just want information, and having a conversation, I can see, is obviously a great way to connect and get people the answers that they're looking for. Should I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, again, as Deborah and I are new, we've learned about NISBA, which is the New York State School Boards Association, and they are involved in the training of school board members. There's mandated training. So this summer, Deborah and I attended governance training.
Yeah.
Yes, it was, it was a good time. And financial training. And it just gives you a really thorough overview of what your role is. And then there's been other trainings. I was able to attend the NISBA convention virtually, which was a really nice way to be able to do it. And then the NISBA Annual Business Meeting. And then there's modules and things like that where board members can go on and learn more about being a board member. It's a really nice resource, and it's something that, what was that other train? Oh, we, we did one on governance.
Yes, we did. That was like a lunchtime.
Yes, a lunchtime webinar.
About how to connect with your local government.
And the importance of how school boards in general are really the most local form of government that you have. And it was, it was very interesting and just gave me a broader appreciation. We were able to tour back in, it was on Election Day. We did a tour of the construction site. So thank you, Dana and Dr. Sinhe for taking us around. And we got to see the new baseball and softball fields, the new dugouts, the, the, the new areas over there. For anyone who's ever been to a baseball game, there's a path now. For anyone who's ever been to a baseball game, there's a path now, and there's a fence to protect you so you're not hit by the baseballs. It's great. We got to see the foundations and things being backfilled, and they were working on the irrigation that day. We got to see, you know, where the art classroom's going to be, and the physics room, and where the business, the Bloomberg Room will be, and see the new boilers. It was a very exciting day. But it was nice to be able to see up close on all these projects. So we appreciated your time for showing us around and explaining everything. And then just another shout-out to the GC Thespians. They were wonderful, the cast and the crew, the teachers in charge. They should be very proud. It was great. It was great to, to see them.
It was an awesome performance.
Yeah.
I'll talk to the signing ceremony, the commitment ceremony. They do quite a thing. You saw the slideshow. There's cake. And, but the amount of students that were committed was the largest amount we've ever had. It was thirteen percent of the class got signed. And there's another signing ceremony in the spring. So that Ed Ramirez was something special. And the, I forgot his name, he made the slides, and he made the kids feel like superstars.
Mr. Cohen.
Mr. Cohen. He made them feel like superstars, and, and all of the families were there, and it was just such a warm, lovely environment that they created, and it's very celebratory. I just have to commend them for that. Thank you.
Thank you. This time is designated for citizens' questions or comments. Please step up to the mic, give your name, address. Please list all of your questions for the board and for the administration. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sarah Hogan, I live on Kenwood Road, and I have two children at the middle school. Erin must have read my mind, because my, one of my concerns is that the current eighth graders have a huge class, and I just want to put it on our radar now so that when they show up in ninth grade next year, it's not a surprise as it was when they showed up in seventh grade. So I just wanted to make sure that we've thought about that at, earlier in the school year, like now, instead of in September when it happens. Also, I have, I started speaking with Mr. Samuelson when my daughter was in sixth grade about seeing if the children could go outside during their home base or recess time in middle school. And I was told, you know, we don't have a fence, but we're ordering a fence, so it'll happen next year. So then the following year, I followed up with him, and then the fence was on back order. Seems that the fence is there. So I was on the Middle School Site Base Committee, I brought it up, and I was basically given a list of like six reasons why this can't happen. But I also work in a school, and it does happen in a lot of schools. In fact, I think we're one of the only middle schools where kids are not outside during recess. I mean, you're taking eleven-year-old children, they should be able to go outside. They only have gym every other day. I feel really strongly that there's, this is like a research-based decision that should happen. As a teacher, I read a book over the summer called Teach Like Finland, and the efficiency of their time spent in the classroom is higher when they get to go out and play and do things and experience fresh air. And there are so many reasons why this can't happen, but I think we need to start rethinking this and be in the solution. Every time that I speak to somebody in the administration, I'm sort of told like, well, yes, 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 well, now my daughter's in eighth grade, and she's still not allowed to go outside. So even if they just had the option, they have the option to go to Makerspace. Why can't it be something similar to that? I mean, as a secondary teacher, I can think of five ways to make this work, but I've only been told all the reasons why it can't work. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Hi, Tina Marcellos, one seventy-one Garden Street. I have two, two questions. One is, last year's eighth grade class, how many of the students went to other schools versus coming to the Garden City High School? Oh, you have that, great. Thank you. And I'm curious how that trends from prior years? Like if it's the same, similar, more?
We had a big bump last year with fifty. It's, it goes anywhere between, between twenty and fifty kids. However, there's another important statistics, they bounce, they bounce back after one year. I don't know that number, but.
I'm curious, my son's in ninth now, so I was just curious how much smaller, because I know his classes are smaller in ninth grade, like the number of students, which is marvelous. But I was just wondering how many? So it's fifty students from last year's eighth grade that went to other schools?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, ma'am. That's great.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, and I'm sure this has been brought up before, and it hasn't happened, is there any option of a late bus? I mean, the high school offers so many amazing after-school activities. I'm getting a little tired of one day picking me up at three-thirty, one day at five o'clock, I work full-time, my husband works full-time. I know other parents do too. I know there's a lot of bus costs, you know, busing kids to other schools and whatnot. So I was curious if there was any reconsideration of a late bus, or as an alternative, could there be crossing guards for a longer period of time at both the middle school and the high school, like those major intersections, to allow for students to maybe go to the library or, or into town as needed? So that was my other question. Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Nancy Arigo, eighty-seven Brook Street. I was here a week and a half ago, whatever it was, discussing dyslexia and my frustration with our programs here. I had a number of questions, multiple potential solutions. I addressed the BOE. I sent a follow-up email with my questions, so nothing got missed. In addition to a couple of more questions, I wanted to know where the BOE stands and what proactively you guys have been doing to address all the items that I presented the other day. What have you guys done?
Last week's meeting?
Yeah, because I know, I had a meeting with Mr. Escobar on Friday. I sent out two emails. I have another meeting scheduled on December twelfth with Ms. Vivona, Mr. Escobar, and Dr. Sinha. So I, as a parent, have been able to move forward. I've done multiple research just regarding legislature that has been almost passed. The New York State PTA that passed solutioning for dyslexia. So I wanted to know what has the BOE done since my conversation and my emails?
Last week?
Yeah.
We work with the administration. We don't execute on stuff like that.
I understand. Have you engaged with the administration? Has there been discussions? Have been meetings planned?
Engaged, but obviously, they're the vessel to execute and handle the situation, so you need to work through the.
I have.
I mean, a week time is not sufficient.
I, I'm not looking for a solution, I'm just asking what have been the next steps? I've been taking next steps as a parent, so I wanted to know what the next steps have been taken by the BOE. And then I know what I've been doing. So I've been moving along, trucking along, you know, step by step. And these issues need to be addressed, because now it is the end of November, and the school year is going to be coming to an end sooner than later after the holidays, and then nothing will get done. So how do we work together? One of the main points that I need is that there should be administration, there should be some sort of collaboration between administration, parents, the BOE, teachers collectively to do something. So you can't just punt, right? Can't be like, they're the administration, we also have a BOE, right? So I, I would appreciate if we can all work together and not just say, the administration decides. Because then my, when I was addressing Ms. Vivona and Dr. Sinha at the last PTA, BOE meeting, I was told to address the BOE. So I did, right? So somebody has to come back and respond if I can't address the administration during a BOE meeting. So it's unfortunate, right?
We will get back to you.
Okay.
Doug Bernstein, one twenty-one White Hall Boulevard in Garden City, obviously. I'm sorry, what's your name? I'm here because of Nancy Arigo. I saw in the Garden City News that dyslexia was brought up and that we were going to be discussing it today, that there would be an opportunity, that these concerns would be raised and addressed. I would just like to say that this is a pressing matter in terms of dyslexia. Dr. Sinha, you know my son very well, you met him last year. Every day that these kids go to school, they are going and be put in an environment that is extraordinarily difficult and challenging. There is a significant lack of teacher education and awareness. My child is often left to do independent work, where the teacher will say, well, you could just read, you could just write. And the reality is that he cannot just read and write as simply as all the other children that can. When he sits there and he struggles, they make snide remarks that are demeaning and upsetting, and he comes home deeply upset. I'm sure my child, like other children in the school, are struggling with this, and it's a very, very difficult and unfortunate situation. It's pressing. I agree with Ms., the other woman who has, who's brought this to our attention. I think it's something that we should try to address as expediently as we can. And I know it's difficult, I know it's not easy, but it is. We're putting our kids day in, day out. We're putting them into a situation that is deeply difficult for them. And I definitely appreciate your treating this the way a parent would treat it, because every day, we're dealing with it, and it is of the utmost importance for us as a parent, and we would love to see that be reflected. So I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
What grade's your son?
Yeah.
He's in sixth grade.
There's no further questions at this time. The board authorizes the use of the consent agenda as part of the meeting agenda. Consent agenda will allow for one motion to approve multiple items as, and such items are identified on the agenda. President of the board will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, and will ask for the board members if they wish to have a discussion or clarification on any specific item. The board will then vote on the consent agenda motion. In addition, a board member may request to have an item removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. At this time, may have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes business of the board items H1 through H12, personnel matters I1 through I12, business matter items J1 through J27, and special education matters K1 through K3.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Assuming there's no further business? Dr. Sinha, I'd already shared this, but the next meeting will be Tuesday, December ninth. So work session, seven PM here at the Garden City High School. And then the regular session will be December sixteenth at seven-thirty at the Garden City High School. At this time, may have a motion that there be no further business to come before the board, that the meeting be adjourned.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.